May filter in afterwards, but let's go ahead and get started on time. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming. This is our second of two town informational town halls about our measure PS, otherwise known as the Sierra Madre Public Safety Special Tax. I think that's why we call it Measure PS. And I'm Mayor Kelly Krebs, and I'm happy to moderate tonight. And I just wanted to go through a few things in introduction before I welcome our city staff to speak on various informational matters. Well, tonight's purpose is mostly informative. We're hoping to answer your questions, provide information, engage in a bit of dialogue with your neighbors that are here, as well as our city officials. We're going to dive into the city's budget and provide an explainer on the measure itself. What we are not here to do tonight is to engage in speculation or guess what may or may not happen in the future. We can't speculate what will happen if the measure doesn't pass. As you know, we're, as city officials, City Council particularly, are under, you know, legal requirements to not discuss things that we will have to come before councils. So if the measure doesn't pass, those will be difficult discussions that will come up in public discussion at a city council meeting, and we will have to address that at the time. So that's just a long way of saying, don't feel discouraged if you ask questions like, what will happen to the police department, or what will happen to the fire department, what will happen to other departments if the measure doesn't pass. Don't be disappointed if folks say that they can't really address that, and that we'll have to deal with that if it becomes the case after the fact. We're also not here, as city officials, to either advocate for or against the measure. Again, this is meant to be informational. We are joined tonight by two of the proponents of the measure, Mr. Walsworth and Mr. Sarif, who will, I'm sure, be glad to talk to you about why they are supporting the measure, and they can go into a more advocacy role. So, we are here tonight, we're joined here tonight by our acting finance director, our city manager, and our city attorney, who will each have a part in providing information, a few logistics. Hopefully, as you came in, you were offered a comment card, and if you have questions that you'd like us to ask, please do turn those in either to me or to our folks outside that are helping organize this. And they will group them together, to the extent that we have questions that overlap or cover the same subject, we'll probably, you know, discuss those for efficiency's sake together. And if there are questions during the meeting, please feel free to submit those comment cards while the meeting is ongoing. If we have time at the end, we will take live questions, and you don't have to write those down. So, with that all said, I think our first presentation will be by our city manager, Jose Reynoso, about the history of our public safety departments.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. My name's Jose Reynoso, and I'm the city manager for the city of Sierra Madre. And thank you for being here tonight. And I want to take a moment to reflect on the history of the Sierra Madre Fire Department that spans about 100 years. It really started in December of 1920. Sierra Madre experienced Sierra Madre Canyon Fire that destroyed the dance pavilion and the bathhouse. And within a month, on January 21, 1921, we had a fire breakout at the Sierra Madre Bakery. And at that time, the nearest fire department was 30 minutes away. And by the time they arrived, the fire had done significant damage, and it became clear to the community that the city needed its own fire department. And that's when the Sierra Madre Volunteer Fire Department was born. In the beginning, the fire department was made up of local volunteers, men and women from our community who were willing to step up and help. They responded to fires and medical emergencies with dedication and bravery, truly exemplifying the spirit of Sierra Madre, neighbors helping neighbors. Fast forward, in 2008, Sierra Madre residents took a significant step by voting to increase the utility users tax so that we could meet industry standard requirements to upgrade the medical response from basic life support EMTs to an advanced life support paramedic program. This enabled us to offer advanced medical care, and it also required us to hire full-time, part-time paramedics, which increased cost. The combination of volunteer and part-time paid paramedics enabled us to continue to provide the best service possible. Even with these improvements, we continued to face challenges. Firefighters were leaving for full-time jobs with other departments, forcing us to explore different options, including contracting with outside fire agencies. In addition, national standards require a minimum number of firefighters and equipment for serious incidents like house fires or major accidents. Since our small, mostly volunteer fire department didn't always have the resources, we often called on neighboring agencies for assistance. And while we received help when we needed it, there were often delays, while we had to wait for firefighters to respond from other cities. And this slowed the response during critical emergencies. Another challenge we faced was with automatic aid agreements, where cities assist each other during medical emergencies. These agreements are meant to be reciprocal, but because we lack staff and equipment to provide the same level of assistance, it strained relationships with nearby cities. Neighboring cities required that Sierra Madre employ a professional, full-time fire department to participate in automatic aid. To better serve our community, on September 1, 2019, Sierra Madre became a full-time career fire department. This was a big milestone for our community, allowing us to hire 13 new firefighter paramedics and fully join the Area C Unified Response System, which includes 12 other fire departments. And it's important to note that we did this without a new revenue stream. And the city knew that at one point, we would have to find a new revenue source to fund our full-time fire department. With the formation of the new department, we have access to additional resources and can give and receive help immediately without delays. This system has fostered a true partnership, where all departments work together to protect each other's communities, making us better equipped to handle emergencies here in Sierra Madre. While becoming a full-time fire department has been a big achievement, it also brought new financial challenges. Operating a full-time fire department is costly, and the city has struggled to recruit and retain staff. And to address this, we increased the salaries of both our fire and police departments. Now, Sierra Madre is a small city. We're just three square miles with a population of about 11,000 residents, yet we are a full-service city with our own police, our own fire, our own public works, utilities, community services, and even our own library. Our public safety departments are exceptional. We offer remarkably quick response times with four minutes for our fire department and three minutes for our police department, with highly trained professionals. This is one of the reasons why residents love living here. It's a safe and secure place to call home. However, maintaining these high standards comes at a cost. The fire department's personnel budget is $3.4 million, and the police department's personnel budget is $4.8 million. And again, in 2023, the city council approved increases in the firefighters and police personnel budgets to provide salaries competitive with those of neighboring cities with similar demographics. However, these increases have accelerated the growing gap between revenues and expenditures, and contribute to a compounding structural deficit. And this is why, on July 9, the city council unanimously supported the public safety tax. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Now, we're going to hear from our acting finance director, Satnam Rait, who will review and discuss the city's budget.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. My name is Satnam Rait, and I'm the acting finance director at the city of Sierra Madre. Thank you for being here tonight, as we dive into the important details of the city's budget for fiscal year 2425. As we know, the financial health of our city directly impacts the quality of life we enjoy and the essential services we rely on. Tonight, I'd like to share some critical facts about our current budget and the challenges we face. The city's general fund is projected to have a balanced budget for fiscal year 2425, with $17.2 million in revenues and $17.2 million in expenses.
There you go.
Property taxes and utility user taxes are the city's two main sources of income, accounting for 70% of the general fund receipts. The city of Sierra Madre receives $21.91 for every $100 collected in property taxes, so roughly 22%. Regarding expenditures, most agencies anticipate that personnel costs will make up a majority of their general fund expense. For fiscal year 2425, personnel expenses are anticipated to be 65% of the general fund. As you can see, we spend half of our budget on police and fire. The full personnel costs for public safety include $3.4 million for fire and $4.8 million for police, which includes wages and fringe benefits. The city currently meets its reserves policy standards. Per our current fund balance policy, the minimum balance in the general fund is set at 25% of operating expenditures, which is in line with the minimum recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association. Reserves in excess of 25% can be spent on capital and/or one-time expenditures and cannot be spent to fund recurring operating expenses. If today's revenues and expenses were to continue as is, without adjustments or new revenue streams, we may struggle to meet our critical operating needs in the future. The city prepared a five-year general fund budget projection using 3% increase for revenues and 5% increase for expenditures. Looking forward, the city of Sierra Madre does not have a structurally balanced budget. In order to bridge this gap, we will need a structural change in either revenues and/or our expenditures. A well-balanced mix of revenue sources is essential to stabilize Sierra Madre's financial base. This mix enables us to continue providing the city services our residents expect and deserve. The figures on the slide illustrate the financial challenges we face as a city and our ability to continue providing essential services. As we look forward to the future, it is imperative that we explore solutions to close these gaps, whether through revenue generation and/or cost management. If today's revenues and expenses were to continue as is, without adjustments or new revenue streams, we may struggle to meet our critical operating needs in the future. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Our last presentation of the night will be by our city attorney, Alex Giragosian, who will actually go through the measure itself and explain the facts and details of the measure that you will see on your ballot.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name's Alex Giragosian. I serve as city attorney for the city of Sierra Madre. I am statutorily tasked with drafting the title, the ballot summary, the impartial analysis, and the question you're going to see on the ballot when you get ready to vote. My job is to explain in layman's terms the contents of the Sierra Madre Public Safety Special Tax. So what is a special tax, and how is it different from a general tax? The revenues of a general tax are deposited in the city's general fund and can be used for any legitimate municipal purpose. In contrast, the revenues of a special tax are deposited in a special fund and can only be used for a specific purpose. In this case, the ballot measure proposes to fund police, fire, and paramedic personnel costs. And personnel costs are defined primarily as wages and benefits, but there are a few others mentioned in the ordinance itself, in the measure. Next question is, what is the tax, and how much revenue are we talking about? Subject to certain exceptions listed in the measure, the tax rate is based on the character of the property. So a single-family residential parcel will see a $480 per parcel per year increase in their county property tax bill. A multi-family residential parcel will see a $576 per parcel per year increase. And a non-residential parcel, like a business, will see a $660 per parcel per year increase. If there are any parcel owners that believe they are exempted from the tax because there are exemptions, they can apply to the finance department for an exemption. The city's finance department estimates that the tax will generate approximately $2,37,037 for the first fiscal year, the first fiscal year being the '25-'26 fiscal year, which is enough to cover the city's projected budget deficit for that fiscal year. Next, how can residents guarantee the funds will be used for the proper purpose? First, the funds will be placed in a special fund. They won't be commingled with other revenues, and their use will be limited to police and fire personnel. So residents will know how much money is in that account, because there's going to be a reporting on that amount. Second, by January 1 of each year, the finance director is statutorily required to file an annual report in a public meeting before the city council to report on the amount of special tax funds collected and expended. So that's annual. Third, the city's books are audited annually by a third-party certified auditor. This auditor is required to ensure that the funds are used for the stated purpose of public safety personnel costs, and the auditor's findings are reported at a city council meeting every So what makes this measure different from the existing utility users tax or sales tax? The utility users tax, or UUT, is a general tax on utilities such as water, electricity, and gas that fund a range of city services. The UUT, like I said, is a general tax, unlike the special tax we're talking about today. So UUT funds can be used to support police and fire, but they can also be used for any legitimate government purpose. In contrast, the special tax measure PS can only be used for public safety personnel costs. So in that sense, it's a more reliable source of public safety funds. Also, unlike some other sources of funding, like the sales tax, all funds from this measure remain under local control, meaning they don't need to be shared with the state or the county. Although sales taxes paid by residents and collected locally, not all funds remain with the city. A portion must be shared with the state and county. The same applies to property tax. While it's collected by residents here, it's distributed across various government agencies. However, this tax is different. Because it's a special tax, the full amount remains with the city and is not shared with any other government agency. There are three points worth noting in addition to what I've said already. The first is that the tax is not indefinite. If adopted, the special tax will take effect on July 1, 2025, and will expire on July 1, 2032. The voters will need to reassess whether they want to continue this tax every seven years. Second, the parcel tax will increase annually based on changes in the Consumer Price Index. So residents can expect a slight increase year over year to keep up with inflation. The minimum annual increase, per the measure language, is going to be 1%. Third, the special taxes placed on the ballot by the city council require a 2/3 majority vote to pass. And if this item was introduced by the council itself, it would be a 2/3 majority vote. But because this item was placed on the ballot by the voters, by the residents, it only requires a majority vote. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And I misspoke. This was not our last presentation of the evening. We're actually going to have our city clerk, Laura Aguilar, come up and talk a little bit about the logistics of the election process from this point until our election day, which is less than a month away.
Good evening, everyone. I am Laura Aguilar, the city clerk for the city of Sierra Madre. I also serve as the election official, and I oversee and manage the elections for our city. I'm here to just provide some information, basic information, on our upcoming election, which is less than a month away. You should have by now received your vote-by-mail ballot. Every voter in the state of California receives a vote-by-mail ballot for their contest for their elections in their city. If you are expecting a vote-by-mail ballot and have not received one, please, you can either contact the city clerk's office or the county registrar's office, Los Angeles County Registrar's office, to check to see if you are registered to vote. You can do that very easily on their website. There is a, if you go to LAvote.gov now, you're able to see what your registration status is. If you have moved recently and you have not changed your voter registration to Sierra Madre, I'm happy to help you with that. We have registration cards that you can complete, and we get those out to the county, and they'll change your voter registration so that you are able to vote. Now, you have a number of options available to you as voters. You can complete your vote-by-mail ballot and mail it in. You can mail it, and it's postage-paid, so you don't have to pay for the postage to submit your ballot. You can just put it in the mailbox. The other option is to drop it off here at City Hall. There is a yellow mailbox, or yellow drop box, right outside of City Hall, where you can drop off your ballot. Your third option is to take your vote-by-mail ballot and take it to a vote center. Now, Los Angeles County has a number of vote centers that you can vote at throughout Los Angeles County. You are not restricted to only voting in Sierra Madre. You can attend to either, go to a 10-day vote center or a four-day vote center anywhere in Los Angeles County. If you work outside of Sierra Madre, and it's more convenient to vote in a location that's closer to your job, or if you have someone that you care for on a regular basis, and there's a vote center closer to them, you're able to place your vote at that vote center, anywhere in Los Angeles County. There are two types of vote centers. There's the 10-day vote center and a four-day vote center. Sierra Madre will have a four-day vote center, which will open the Saturday before Election Day. On November 2, you will be able to vote at Sierra Madre Christ Church, and that's up on 212 North Lima, or Lima, depending on which side of the fence you're on. And you can vote on Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, from 11:00 to, excuse me, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and then on Election Day, you can vote from 7:00 to 8:00. And so if you, there's the address. This is a different vote center than I think most of everyone in this room and all the voters are used to, but it's where we're going to be voting this year. As an alternative, you can vote anywhere else in Los Angeles County. They will be able to look you up very easily. Now, one of the questions that has come up, and one of the residents forwarded to me recently, was a question about the cost of holding a special election. And so I thought it was a really good question, and I've gotten that question a couple of times, and so I would like to share the response that I provided those couple of times that I was asked that question. First, there are a couple of different kinds of elections. There's a special election, and there's a regular election. A regular election is an election that's scheduled. We're expecting it. It's a regular election that we hold every two years. A special election is an unscheduled election. It's an election that we weren't anticipating. And so there are many variables that come into play when you're calculating the costs of an election. For example, 2024 is our special election year. But not only that, it's a presidential election year. So why is that important? Reason it's important is because the cost of, in Los Angeles County, the cost of conducting an election or paying for an election is based on a shared cost model. That means that the more agencies that are participating in the election, the more the cost is shared. So in a presidential election year, like this year, for example, we have a city election, we have a county election, we have a state election, and we have a federal election, which means our piece of the pie is a lot smaller than it would be any other year. And so while it depends on how many agencies are part of the piece of the entire pie, it really means that this year, our costs, or Sierra Madre's costs, to participate in the election will be less than it would be any other year, because we are sharing that cost with a bunch of other agencies. And so some of you who were here yesterday saw we have even a school election on the ballot, which is another partner in the cost sharing. Now, having said that, one of the reasons that it's difficult to calculate the election cost for each election is because you never know how many partners you will have on the ballot. And so, again, as I mentioned before, there are a lot of variables in the number, in how the election costs are calculated. And so some elections, you may only have 10 or 20, some you may have less than 10 or 20 partners in the election. In a general election, it's great. In a presidential election, even better, because that reduces our costs. In a special election, if you're not sharing the cost, the cost may be higher. Again, lots of variables to consider, and so we may not always know what the actual cost is, and we are dealing with an estimated cost. The election for this year will be different than the election, the cost of the election that we had last year, considerably less, because last year we had less partners to share with. The election before that was not a presidential election. It was a regular election, and so the cost for that will be different than this year. And we won't know that until after the election is over. I hope that this presentation has been helpful to you. If any of you have questions about where you can vote, if you're registered to vote, if you did not receive your ballot and you were expecting one, please contact the city clerk's office. We'd be more than happy to help you with any questions regarding the election.
That's it? Thank you very much, City Clerk Aguilar. So we've received a number of comment speaker question cards, and I see more are on their way. As I said before, if things occur to you as we're talking, please do, please do continue to submit them, and we please do uh continue to submit them and we will address them as we go. And then again, at the end, if um we have time, we will have live question and answer session. Um, so I'm gonna start with this question, um, which is um, measure PS will help balance the budget for five years. What other um considerations are on the table other than additional taxes? And so I'll just reiterate what I said before is that we're not gonna speculate sort of what other specific measures could be taken um, to backfill or to lower, to close our gap, our projected um budget gap. Um, that said, I think um the city manager could talk a little bit about other um uh initiatives that we have been talking about, you know, generally speaking, um with respect to uh revenue and and expense management.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the question. So I think um, I think it's important to note that um, City of Sierra Madre, every year we prepare a budget, we start with the zero-based budget. So that means that every expense um has to be, each department starts with the budget of zero and every expense has to be justified to make sure that your tax dollars are used appropriately. And the executive team is tasked with making sure and holding each other accountable to make sure that the expense that each department brings forward is justified and we bring that to the city council for final approval. So that's number one. Uh, number two is um, this this year, or last year, uh, we brought aboard a consultant um that helps us look for grants. Um, and we've been successful in acquiring a number of grants. And it's important to note that these are, these are one-time uh revenue sources and they're not really designed for ongoing expenses. But for example, we're able to acquire a ten million dollar grant to fund, to fund the uh meaningful expansion of our library. Our police department was able to acquire a three hundred thousand dollar grant to help with enforcement of cannabis and impaired driving. Uh, our IT department has uh submitted a grant for, uh, I think up to two hundred thousand dollars to strengthen our our uh our our infrastructure against cyber attacks. Um, and our, another good example is our our pub, our community services department has applied for a hundred and eighty thousand dollar grant from the state for for parks. So we're always looking for opportunities. We, we, we have a consultant that's looking at our strategic goals and objectives and looking for grant opportunities that line up with the strategic goals and objectives that the community brought to the council and that the council and and staff were able to put together. So those are a couple of examples. I think a a couple of other examples is we have um, some development projects that are that are in town. We have the Meadows Project where there's gonna be forty-two new homes. Uh, we have the um, the Carter Projects, um, the Stonehouse Project. So those are gonna bring additional revenue as well. So those are a few examples, Mayor.
That is a great segue to our next question, the last point that you made, because there is a question that says property tax is the largest revenue source. Does the budget take into account new home developments and the sale of existing homes for increased prices as increased property tax?
So I I can, I can touch on it and maybe our finance director can expand. So when we do our projections, we don't include the, for example, we don't include the Meadows Project. We don't know when those homes are gonna be built. We don't know when they're gonna be sold. We don't know when they're gonna impact our budget. So we do it based on on actuals and projected forecasts is based on what's actually in town.
Yeah, I agree with what you just said. Three percent, three percent is our run rate for the revenues and five percent for expenditures.
And if I'm not mistaken, we get property tax estimates from the county, which I believe does include some measure of understanding that some homes will be sold at fair market value, so the tax base will increase. So I assume that the county's projections that we use for our own projections include some factor for that.
Yes, and we do get them from a consultant HDL.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, also, um, city manager, similar to what you're talking about in terms of exploring um uh revenue sources, there is a question about um the B of A building that the city recently purchased. I think this is a suggestion that it be sold and use the proceeds to fund the the fire and police.
Thank you, Mayor. So the Bank of America building was purchased with reserves. Um, reserves can be used for capital improvement projects or one-time expenditures, not to fund ongoing services. When you think about the Bank of America building, we spent roughly three million dollars. That's an asset. Cash is an asset. A building is an asset. Cash is a liquid asset. In this case, it's a building that if the city needed to at at some point sell it, they could sell it. But we, but it's not designed to fund ongoing continuous expenses. It's designed to fund capital projects or one-time expenditures. So the idea of selling the the building to to fund ongoing um uh cost um is prohibited by our, by our code.
Thank you. Um, I think turning to our city attorney, a couple of technical questions. Um, for example, uh, one question uh revolves around Prop thirteen, um requiring a two-thirds vote for any tax. How does that um uh relate to the majority vote required for this tax?
Is it possible to pull up the slide again?
Which one?
I think it would be easier if if we were to pull up the slide. There's a
The chart?
Chart, yeah.
That one?
Yeah, is it possible maybe shared on these screens as well? Right, so uh, there was a mention of Prop thirteen. Prop thirteen is actually not the relevant proposition here. The relevant proposition is Prop two eighteen. Uh, and Prop two eighteen is what implicates the special tax. Now, if you look at this chart here, you'll see uh, the first row there says purpose. We talked about that, the difference between a general and special tax. The second row there is city council approval. That's the approval threshold necessary to place it on the ballot, right? The third one there is, and the fourth are are what gets to your, the question that was asked. Voter approval. It says if introduced by the city council, uh, a general tax requires a majority vote of the of the voters. And then a special tax requires a two-thirds vote of all voters in the city. But if, and now look at the fourth row, if the, if it's introduced by voter initiative, which this one is, uh, the general tax only needs a majority vote of the voters and the special tax also only needs a majority vote of the voters. And there's a case on point, um, I forget the exact name, but it's it's City of Upland versus something. And the court in that case laid out that uh the two-thirds majority is not necessary when an initiative is introduced by, I'm sorry, when a measure is special tax measure is introduced by voter initiative.
Thank you. Um, similarly, sort of technically around the um measure itself. If the tax raises funds uh in excess of expenditures, what happens to the surplus? Does it roll over to the following year? And then can it accrue interest? That last part might be a question for our finance director.
It's, so this, this is a complex question. I'm gonna try to answer best I can. Uh, two parts. First part, the budget isn't gonna increase for police and fire by, if the estimated projection is two million something, it's not that the budget for police and fire is now gonna increase by another two million and we're gonna have to hire all those people because we don't have two million dollars of police and fire personnel costs to pay for. Uh, what's gonna happen is, if we can go back to the, to the slide with the five-year projection, so the city is projecting a structural deficit here. Given existing uh personnel costs, th- the city is going to be in the red. Those, the funds that come from this uh tax measure, if it's adopted, are gonna cover that difference up to whatever the city council budgets for fire and personnel costs. And that budget is determined every single year by the city council. Uh, so as to the question, if it incre- if it exceeds expenditures, is it gonna roll over? It will never exceed expenditures because if the projection is only two million and our fire and police personnel expenditures are way above that, there's never gonna be an exceedance of that expenditure, is the first point. Now, the second point, this one's a little more complex. Uh, in the city, we have something called a GAN limit. And the GAN limit basically limits how much money we can take in versus how much money we're allowed to expend. If the revenues that we take in exceed our GAN limit, we have to issue a refund to residents. The GAN limit is currently something that we're studying uh for the next fiscal year, so I don't have an answer for that one, whether we're near it or not. Uh, but that's a two separate, that's two separate conversations. One has to do with PD and per- and fire personnel costs and their their expenditure, and then the other has to do with expenditures of the city in total.
And and then um, finance director, wait, I assume money sitting in any account, whether it be a special account, um, are are invested or you know, and uh earn some sort of uh return based on how we invest our funds?
They're mostly invested in LEAF funds, which luckily for the last few months or for some town, we've been earning four percent on those funds.
Thank you. Um, we do have a couple of questions specific to our um police and fire operations and personnel. Um, so I I may actually invite one uh, one or both of our chiefs up to to address those questions. Um, the first is, and this might actually first be addressed by our finance director. Um, why has the police personnel budget gone up from three point six eight two million for twenty-two, twenty-three to approximately four point eight million at, for the adopted twenty-four, twenty-five budget, when the number of full-time employees has been almost flat?
Uh, Mayor, I I I think I can can answer that question. So so as I mentioned in my presentation earlier, we did increase um the the wages for our our police and fire. Um, and when we look at, i- if you were to compare police and fire, police has roughly twenty-two employees, twenty-two, twenty-three, and fire has about seventeen. So you are gonna notice a more significant increase in in the police uh personnel budget over the fire, uh but a lot of it is due uh to uh increases in personnel cost approved by the council.
Thank you. Um, and then specifically with respect to, you know, those those raises, um, you know, those were um negotiated with the unions in in response to concerns about turnover and retention and recruiting. There is a specific uh question about, um, hearing more about this, the turnover and recruiting issues that we've experienced in both of our um public safety departments. So I'd invite one of the chiefs to start about, to address that.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just to clarify again, the the question is to elaborate a little bit on uh historical retention and then recruitment as well? Okay, um, great question. First of all, um, personally, I would like to welcome everybody here. Thank you for coming out. Thank you for having, excuse me, uh enough interest in this city and what happens in the city to be involved and to to educate yourself. So thank you for that. Um, just some brief history, we've, since this has been going on, we have done our homework and we try to go back. So we went back on the fireside, um, is what I'll speak to in 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 the last ten years, which we've noticed the big change in the model for the fire department. Um, going from volunteer to a combination department to a full-time career department. Um, some of the numbers that we came up with in the last ten years, again, so from twenty fourteen to twenty twenty-four, uh, the fire department has had two hundred and forty-five personnel terminated. And that doesn't mean we fired them. That just means that they moved on. Some were let go. But two hundred and forty-five people, and that again will include the volunteer program, which is one of the big reasons why we made the transition into a career department. Um, it was no longer sustainable with volunteers. To kind of bring it into a little bit more perspective, uh, career department within the last five years, we have terminated thirty-four people. Um, and to kind of break that up, last year was a thirty-five, in twenty twenty-three was a thirty-five percent turnover rate. Uh, that's, that's extreme. That's very, very high for a profession that historically has just been very hard to get into, desirable, and is a good career. Uh, multitude of different reasons for that, but the turnover uh is extremely high. Adversely, this year, I'm so happy to say we are fully staffed. Twenty twenty-four, we're almost through the year and I'm looking at a lot of my members here and I'm not hoping to see them going anywhere. We've had zero turnover. That is attributed to the increases, bringing our staff members up to up to a competitive wage and salary within their profession and within the area. Um, and that is a hundred percent from the support of council and management and the community as well. So um, those are, those are the numbers for fire and I'll turn, yes, ma'am.
Before, before, there, there's a related question. Um, um, one of our attendees notes that um forty percent of the Sierra Madre households earn less than a hundred thousand dollars, I I guess according to the the census. But the Sierra Madre Fire Department um earns around or in excess of that. Um, I I think the, there's not really a question, but I I assume that, you know, the question is um around why the the salaries of the fire department are in that range.
Um, fair enough question, as we're all trying to struggle to make ends meet. I I can respect that question and appreciate it. Um, the firefighters' salaries and wages, they're competitive. That is the industry standard. So in order for us to maintain the high-quality personnel that we have, we have to pay them competitive wages. Um, there's, that's, that's the answer to that. Um, so hopefully.
Chief Barrientos? Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the question. I'm Chief Gus Barrientos. For those of you that haven't met me, I'm very honored and humble to be here uh before you. We are very fortunate to have a fully-staffed um police department with highly-trained and committed police officers here in Sierra Madre. I think the big concern, if we look at it historically, over the last ten years, we've lost, whether for retirement or officers moving on to another police department, seventy-seven officers in the last ten years. Every time we lose an officer, it comes at a cost of about a hundred thousand dollars per officer that leaves. So they come here, it's a stepping stone, and they move on. I think with us, it's about retention and sustainability within the department. We're fully staffed, like I said. That's my biggest concern, is to be able to retain the qualified personnel that we have, that are well-trained, committed, and loyal with the uh, with the organization. Despite our current staffing levels, like I said, we're not immune to the challenges that may may arise, which is uh losing officers to other organizations.
Chief, i- if um, one of you can talk about some of the challenges as far as uh the re- the recruitment benefits or incentives that we're seeing from other agencies?
So a lot of the police agencies, so years ago, historically, uh, you had a huge list to to choose from for officers or firefighters that were coming on the job. And I'm gonna speak from the side of 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 uh law enforcement. You don't get a large list. If we can get three, four, et cetera, that apply for a a position, that's a lot. So all of the agencies around here, we have to stay, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna call it competitive. But I'll give you all an example, like Torrance PD right now, they give you a hundred thousand dollar signup bonus. All of our agencies in our surrounding areas, I just had a St. Gabriel Valley Chiefs meeting this morning. All of them are between ten and twenty thousand dollars. Whittier, the city of Whittier, gives you a ten thousand dollar signup bonus and seventy-five thousand dollar down payment towards a purchase of a home in their own city. So the whole thing is, how do I compete? I know that Glendale is is moving in a direction of giving a fifty thousand dollar bonus. Um, with, so they're gonna have the pay, the benefits, and the uh signup bonus. We can't compete. So I think we have really, really good officers. That's my biggest concern, and I just wanna retain what we have. We're fully staffed. All of our surrounding areas can only envy us because we are fully staffed.
So there is a follow-up question for our police department, although it starts out as sounding like a fire department question. Um, the fire department's twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five goals include some plans to try and increase cost recovery efforts, you know, the paramedic programs, et cetera. Does the police department have similar cost recovery ideas?
So unfortunately, in law enforcement, we're not in the recovery business. It's more what we pay out. So for example, um, we were talking about budget earlier today. Why are the costs different a couple of years compared to today? It's a rise of operational costs, rise of equipment, and then the increases in wages. So for example, I'll, I'll put a hypothetical. We arrest a subject in our city. We transport them to Pasadena jail, book them, process, and they have a medical condition. We pick up the tab on the processing of the jail, the medical expenses. We have to pay for all that. And there's no way of of recovering it. So we're really not in the business of recovery. We're in the business of providing public safety.
Yes. Fortunately, on the fireside, we are afforded the ability for cost recovery. And most of that is going to come through our EMS transports and patient care. LA County has a, they put out an annual rate that we are allowed to follow as far as basically fees for service that help us to offset the costs. Because as you know, depending on a person's insurance provider, especially with Medicare, Medicaid, those, those recoveries for us are, are, are on the lower side. But some of the, some of the different providers, sometimes will cover the whole cost. But again, it's a, it's a very expensive business. As Chief Barrientos said, with supplies, with the narcotics, with everything that we have to purchase, extremely expensive. So, that's why we are afforded the, the ability to recoup some of the cost. And that doesn't, that doesn't always come out to all of the costs, so that we don't become whole at any time.
Thank you very much. Do you have one technical question about the CPI increase included in the measure? I'm not sure who would address this, but, but basically, what, I guess, what CPI index or, or amount will be used to, use to, to apply that adjustment each year?
I believe it's the Long, Los Angeles, Long Beach, Anaheim, California index. Consumer price index for all urban consumers. And last year, our annual was 3.5%. It, last few years, it's been around the 3% range. We had one-off year in '22. It was 7%, 7.4%. But as Alex mentioned, the minimum would be 1% and the max would be whatever the CPI index will be at that time.
And that CPI index is prepared by, I think, the Bureau of Labor Statistics. So, that's a completely independent agency, not at all specific to our, our, our city or, or this tax. We do have one question that I'm, I'm afraid we can't address as, as a city, but I, I hope, hopefully, we can ask our proponents to address that. And that was how the amount for the assessment itself in the tax was, was arrived at and the number of years for the, the length of, the seven years of the length of the tax. Because the city didn't sponsor it, I, I would ask that perhaps Mr. Wellsworth or Mr. Serif could maybe not hear, but separately address that, that, that question. And I'm, I'm sure if others have that question, you know, maybe after our meeting, you know, the, the proponents can stick around a little bit and talk a little bit about what the thinking was into, into crafting the measure and maybe some, some reasons why they are proponents.
Mayor, if I could clarify that point as well. The, the city didn't participate at all in crafting this, this ordinance. And the city didn't have any role in reviewing the ordinance before it came to the city for circulation. So, we didn't have any involvement in putting the language together.
So, that's the last of my comment cards, unless someone, there's a late-breaking question. We do have a little bit of time. I mean, we were scheduled to go to seven, but I think folks can stay a little bit longer than that. So, I'm happy to open things up if people have questions they'd like to ask one-on-one. Or, and are we doing that with a mic?
Just to add on to my last reply as far as recovery costs. One thing I was remiss in stating is, any participation that we do in mass mutual aid throughout the state and wildland fires and such, we are also reimbursed for staff time on that. So, there is a lot of overtime that, that comes with those deployments. But we are, we're basically, we're matched almost dollar-for-dollar on that reimbursement. So, again, it, it's, it's not to be a burden on the city or the agency. It's out to, it's to get the help out to the state and to our neighbors to supply that, that help. So, and if we use city equipment on that same deployment, there is recovery cost for that as well for the use of the city equipment. So, I just wanted to make sure that, that we had that in there. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
So, because this is technically a special meeting, I think we will treat any live comments or, or questions as public comments. So, we'll do our typical three-minute time limit if you wanted to come up and provide comment or question. So, at this point, I would, if you have something you'd like to ask or comment, I think someone has the mic and they can bring that to you. So, just raise your hand. Oh, not, okay. All right, I'll watch that.
We can't hear it.
What, actually, why don't you come up? Why, we know this works. Would you mind coming?
I was the person who asked about cost recovery. And I thought it was great that the fire department included that in their goals for 2024, 2025. And they were thinking, you know, you know, what happens if this doesn't go forward? But in terms of cost recovery for the police department, and excuse my ignorance, I was thinking about enforcement. I mean, I am a big walker in this city, and I feel totally unsafe with the people who blow through stop signs and speed through town to race to the car line or whatever it is in the mornings and the afternoons. And it seems like really untapped revenue. And I don't, that's what I was thinking about when I was thinking about enforcement and cost recovery and that being a possible. Obviously, it's not $2 million, but something that could be looked at as a way to fill in some budget holes. Thank you.
So, Chief, before you respond, I'd like an opportunity to respond. And thank you, thank you for that question. And I, I think what's important with your question is, is the understanding that when we have local control of our police and fire and a resident comes with a concern like that, we can address it. I can talk to my police chief and say, we have a concerned resident. We have some issues at this corner, at this intersection. Let's see what we can do to increase enforcement. That becomes very difficult if you're dealing with an outside agency like the sheriffs or the LAPD. So, I'm glad to hear that, and we hear that. And when we hear things like that, we do take action to try to, to make change. And Chief, if you can answer the question.
Thank you, Jose, for that comment, and thank you for that question. So, we do do a lot of traffic enforcement in the city. Given the limited resources that we have, I have one traffic officer. And I can encourage traffic enforcement, which we do every single day. We're, we even keep data and we keep a, a list of all the complaints. What I can't do as a police chief is give quotas. So, I can't expect officers to write 20, 30, 40 tickets for the purpose of income. That's unethical. So, that's where the dilemma is. We encourage it. We only have one traffic officer, but I, I can't give a quota where I specify how many citations a day. That would be unethical on my behalf and unethical in the city. Well, well, we have all of the officers that enforce traffic, but one specifically assigned to traffic enforcement. We do receive a grant that offsets officer salaries, the OTS, which is a, a state grant for about $40,000 that compensates the officers that work traffic enforcement. But to, and, and then when you look at the citations, number one, we don't set fees for traffic citations. It's very a small percent that you get from that, that citation. We don't get the full amount. So, just to give you an idea, we write about 1,000 citations a year just in the city. I'm sure we could increase them a lot more. And that's something we're pushing right now. I don't know if you're aware, but recently, we had a pedestrian detail, a special detail up by the post office. So, I'm going to go back to income. The OTS grant, so anytime we receive funding or grants, there's very specific criteria or rules that you have to follow. One of them is you have to advertise. So, for example, if you have a DUI checkpoint, we have to advertise and give the driver an egress prior to getting to the checkpoint. Those are all requirements, state mandated. It's out of our control. So.
I really appreciate these comments, and it's a little outside, the, the, the safety aspect is a little outside the scope of this meeting, but we're happy, and, and we did just actually get public comment at our meeting this week about increasing the number of, requesting the increase in the number of the flashing lights at some of our crosswalks. And so, that it, the safety, pedestrian safety particularly has been, you know, has been agendized, at least in that context. So, I definitely recommend if folks have concerns about that, to be on the lookout for when that comes up on the agenda. I'm happy to have the full discussion at, at, at a council meeting. But to reiterate, I think from a policy standpoint, because we've recently done a, you know, a review of the, the city's fees and fines and things, as a policy matter, at least this current council is not looking to fines as a sustainable revenue source. We don't, are, are not really interested in, in fining as a, as a way to generate revenue. I think, you know, I'll speak for myself, but based on that discussion, I feel like my fellow city council members are on the same page. We view those as incentives and disincentives, not as much as income-producing. In fact, we'd prefer the income be zero, right? We'd prefer that people don't have the infractions to be fined for. So, I, I, yeah, I definitely appreciate the, the safety point, but from a revenue standpoint, I don't think that's something, at least in, in the context of setting our, setting our fees, that people were looking to that as a sustainable revenue source. Is there anyone else who would like to ask a question or make a comment? Please. I don't know. I think, it might just come up. Our microphones are looking. Okay. Oh, you know what? Actually, I think it's, it's being recorded, so, yeah, it won't pick you up otherwise. Sorry.
I just really want to acknowledge the city. I don't know that you get enough acknowledgement. I appreciate the communication. I appreciate the explanation. I moved to the city three years ago. I'm emotional about the city. I, I love living here. I feel it's a very well-managed city. Every city has its problems. But when we bring them up, they get addressed. And just kudos to the police department because if you lived in the city of LA, response times are awful. Last week, a bear attacked our car, and an officer left a note on the windshield at 3:00 AM. And all the neighbors were commenting how safe we felt that somebody was patrolling the neighborhood at 3:00 AM. So, I, I feel very safe. And the other thing is, you know, we don't pay alarm fees like you do in the city of LA, hundreds of dollars. And we had an alarm, and the police department responded within three minutes. It was amazing. And I just appreciate the way the city is run. I love my neighbors, and I love the city.
Thank you very much. And that, that was not a plant, so. Very much appreciate that. You're right. That's not usually the comments that we get. Any other, any other questions or comments that we can address tonight? Well, thank you guys so much for coming. It, it really is impressive that we have been able to have the turnout. We will have a third version of this at our regularly-scheduled city council meeting, our next one, which is a week from this coming Tuesday. I'm, I'm forgetting the date.
22nd.
Oh, and if you are interested in the full, the full text of the, of the initiative, it's, it's available at the back, the back room. And I was also going to remind and, and hope that our proponents would spend some time maybe outside in the pergola after the meeting to address some of the questions that the city, you know, wasn't involved in or can't otherwise address here in terms of advocacy and putting the, putting the, the measure together itself. So, hopefully, they're able to do that, and, and some of those questions can be answered as well. Again, thank you for coming, and hopefully, we'll see you at our next meeting as well. But happy voting.